Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. We have two members absent tonight.
Councilmember Ashby will be absent this evening. We expect Councilmember Warren momentarily and Vice Mayor Hanson momentarily.
Yes. Let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Hoboken, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I don't think you need to... If you would please remain up front, I think we would appreciate it because we have words for you this evening. Yes, we do. And that's you.
Are we ready?
Do you want to begin?
With Fran.
With Fran? Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
How does this fit with the definition of behind the scenes?
You are out from behind the curtain here, absolutely, and we want to honor you tonight. And I'm going to begin with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a special privilege. We've got two things for... Well, I've got two things for you, Fran. But there's a lot we can't show you to demonstrate our gratitude, which is all of the wonderful people who have benefited from your work over the past 32 years, which is a very significant career. You've basically touched every part of the built city during your time, and I could read this resolution that we've done, but I think it would embarrass you. I think you're probably already embarrassed to be here right now in front of us. So I would encourage my colleagues to tell their favorite story, Fran, but I will just say that as we've embarked on this convention center, community center theater, and memorial auditorium renovation, all of your skills have come to bear. And you learned those things working on large projects like the Central Valley Station and the rail yards. I mean, your legacy here will touch virtually every citizen and every visitor, and to that and for that, we're very grateful. I have a resolution signed by the mayor and city council declaring that should you retire, we will terminate all relationships, all benefits. And so hopefully, I encourage you to unretire. I'm just kidding. But I'd also like to give you, on my behalf, one of my signature challenge coins, which has our city motto, "Herbs Indomita," indomitable city, and you've brought that spirit to your work. Our national motto, "From many come one." You've worked not only successfully across communities, but you've brought people together. And then finally, this last one, which is a way of living life, which is to focus on the task at hand, "Ajekwadajus," which means "do well and do good." But Churchill said it better than I could, which is if you stop to throw a stone at every barking dog, then you never make it. And you have been very disciplined, even while you bake a little bit on the side. You've been very disciplined, and you've accomplished a lot. So thank you, Fran, for your 32 years. Hopefully, you're not a stranger after your official retirement, but we're very grateful.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been here eight years since... Angelique has two weeks on me, but she's out tonight, so I'm the senior person here. In eight years, I have heard nothing but great comments about you and your work. I think your disposition, your ability to get things done, you're a go-to person all the time, and just the way that you carry yourself around here is really, I think, a great symbol of who we want to be and what we want to be as a city. I just want to say thank you for all your work. It's been great. I know every time I see you, I say, "Don't go," and I'm really not kidding. I think you will be greatly, greatly missed around here and the work that you've done in helping move the city forward. I hope you feel proud of everything you've accomplished, and I think we need to figure out a place to put your name up someplace because so many things in the city would not exist had you not been involved with them. So I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Jennings.
It should be Councilmember Guerra who presses his button and my name comes up, but I will take it right now while we work on that.
I'll go after it.
You have been an incredible employee, and I think for those who have been a teammate with you for the last 32 years, they would all say the exact same thing. They would say that you're compassionate. They would say that you're someone that could be counted on. They would say that you're someone that does incredible work, and your quality and excellence is second to none. I've had the opportunity to work with you for the last five years, and I would ditto everything that I've already said. If there's any way that I can convince you not to retire, and I'd like to have a personal one-on-one conversation with you to talk to you about it.
One second. Whoever has their telephone on, could you please turn it off? Phone's here in the chambers.
It's Mac, maybe?
But anyway, just a great job, and we wish you the very best in your retirement, and we hope that there is something... If there's anything we can do for you as you move forward onto the next stage of life, please know that you have a lot of friends that you can count on at any point in time, and we'll always be ready to be there for you.
Thank you, and remember, you're my council member.
That's right.
Thank you. Jeff Harris, Councilman Harris.
And don't forget Eric wanted to speak.
And Eric wanted to... You're next.
So Fran, you're really a great spirit to have on the team. You know, you're always pleasant. You work awfully hard, and we definitely have deep gratitude for all of the efforts you've expended on behalf of the city. You also make the best apricot jalapeno jelly I've ever tasted, and I'd be happy to trade honey for that every year that I will continue to know you. So I look forward to that exchange, and I'm also glad you're coming back as an annuitant because you have your hands deeply in a project that's very near and dear to the city, and your expertise is just invaluable. So we'll let you go for a little bit, see you back here pretty soon, and help us get through some pretty big issues moving forward. But again, thank you for everything you've done for the city of Sacramento.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Guerra.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, Fran, again, if we could keep you and convince you to stay longer, I'd be willing to vote for any motion that's on the table. But most importantly, I want to thank you for all your mentorship for... As soon as I came on to the council, there were a lot of projects going on, and you helped me get up to speed real quickly. But more importantly, I felt in this... We just recently did these childcare hearings, and I was deeply moved by your suggestions and your own personal experience of what it was being a young engineer and being a young parent and trying to create a career and how we can make those opportunities. And here you are as one of our assistant city managers, just great success. I mean, your family must be extremely proud of you. And of course, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't say that I'm extremely proud of another Sac State Hornet who's been an engineer. Go Hornets and Stingers up.
Sac State, number one. Of course. Councilman Carr.
Sac State rises again, yes. Fran, no employee is indispensable, but you are about as close as you can get to it. I don't know what Howard is going to do. He's done a great job of filling positions, but I don't know how he can replace your experience, your savvy, your calmness under pressure, and your willingness to educate us on those things that we need to know about coming into the city new. So I thank you for your service. Thirty-three years is a long time in any position, doing anything for any one organization. Your sacrifices will not be noted except by you and your family and perhaps the close employees, but I want you to know how much we really appreciate having worked with you and having known you.
Thank you, Larry. So I get a word here, if I may. So it's really not fair in a way to try to sum up 32 years of service in a...
Been with her for two-thirds of that, right?
Well, I was going to say, in a brief... With brief comments because it doesn't really reflect, I think, how profoundly your city feels about you. And I am one who... Jay may be the veteran here, but I got to serve with Fran in my prior chapter here. And to me, you hadn't changed at all when I came back. So this is, I think, the highest compliment I could pay to you, that you obviously have tremendous skill and great patience, but I think what really stands out to me is that you really understand us. Because sometimes there is that divide, right, between the staff and the politicians sometimes, right? And you really... You really, I think, are so successful in part because you bridge both what's necessary to pull off the most difficult of projects, but you also understand the political side of it and the imperatives in a very appropriate way. And I've always felt seen by you. And whenever I walk into a meeting that is about a challenging subject or a difficult project, and I see you sitting there, I kind of breathe a sigh of relief because I know it's going to be a productive meeting. So thank you, Fran.
Would you like to do a picture with us?
Absolutely.
Well, you've got to give her a chance to say a few words. Come on.
So I'll just tell you, one of the questions people ask me is, you know, why did you come to this city? So I worked for eight and a half years for the Corps of Engineers right out of college. I had already worked for the County of Sacramento as a clerk typist when I was in college, and I had worked for the State Department of Water Resources as an engineering assistant, and then, you know, eight and a half years with the Corps. And I loved the opportunities they gave me because I advanced quickly. I learned project management. But the work I was doing, I was working on like kind of high-level military projects. It didn't always align with who I was as a person, and I am a Sacramento native. So I just felt like there was another spot for me where I could take the skills and also love the work with my whole heart. So, you know, being the way I'm raised, my father, he didn't think this was a good idea because he had like a second-grade education, but all he knew was I had a good job with the Corps, and so why would I leave it? So probably about five years down the road, I had just become a senior engineer. My parents showed up one day. For some reason, they were down here, and they were going to... I needed to give them a ride home, but I couldn't leave yet because I wasn't expecting them. So my dad and my mom sat in my office for about an hour. And when my dad passed away, when people came up, a couple of men came up to me and told me, one of them pulled my business card out of his wallet, that my father had taken those and shared them with his friends and was so proud of me. And I was just blown away because he never told me, my mom didn't tell me, that he had taken them. And they were like, "He always talked about you and how proud of you." And when we grew up, you know, we didn't hear that. We didn't get... Howard knows this, that you don't... In our culture, you don't get told that. You're just supposed to know. So that helped me know that, you know, that... Another reason this was the right decision. And then my daughter, because I was a single mother around seven years after I got here, she ended up having to come with me to meetings at times. And she has a political science degree, and she now works in San Jose where the developer doing some of the same kind of things that she got exposed to with me. And so I see that the family has influenced me, it's influencing her, and I'm just very grateful for the city family that I've been able to work with in all these years because, you know, I spent more time with these people in some ways than my own family. And I'm very grateful for the opportunities that you've all given me to work on projects that, you know, had real meaning to you, that you trusted me to work with you to make them happen, and forever grateful for that, and especially for Howard, for believing in me and having the confidence in me that I would be able to be a member of his team and help him. So thank you very much.
Beautiful.
And any of the senior staff who want to join us down here, please feel free. Hector.
Nope. Nope.
Hey, there.
Hey, what's up? Come on. Going to go on three. Going to go one, two, three. One more phone. All right, not my call.
I've heard of Fran before.
All right, one more. One, two, three.
I've got a question about the trees.
The trees. Okay. That was great. So I'd like to ask Commander Robert Bogan to please come up from the United States Navy, if you would, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Commander Robert Bogan, and I am the commanding officer of the Navy Reserve Center in Sacramento, which supports over 400 reservists who live and work in the local area. Along with that, what I'm briefing you about is so in July, the city hosted the Navy Week here in Sacramento, and we had naval units from all around the country come to support and to kind of show the Navy and, you know, show our support for the community. One of the units that wanted to attend but was unable to was the USS California, one of the submarines who was deployed. And she had made a plaque and given some coins and hats for the city council for her appreciation for the Navy's ability to participate. Unfortunately, due to her deployment, those items, they went, came here, went back to Norway, and then just got back here now. So I'm here to present you with the plaque from the USS California, thanking you for the city's participation in the Navy Week we had earlier this year, along with a handwritten letter from the CO as well as some hats and some coins.
Well, it's a little gesture on our part to show our esteem and respect for what you do to protect all of us. So thank you. Good. Come right on up here. Yes, come on up. Nice to see you. We got... Oh, we got Navy hats here. Look at this, the USS California. Okay, well, we'll share. We will share them in a plaque. So I'll just read this. Team Sacramento, "Thank you for allowing us to participate in Navy Week from afar while we are deployed to U.S.-European Command. Please accept these small tokens of appreciation for supporting our Navy and California teams. We look forward to participating personally in future Navy Weeks." I'm going to get this right, I think. Hoya, California. Huya. I knew I shouldn't have done that. Best regards. Who signed this?
Commander David Payne. He's the commanding officer.
Commander David Payne. Great. Thank you very much. Turn around so we can all take a picture, okay? Very good. Those are our special presentations for this evening. Now let's move to the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that need to be heard separately or to be removed?
I just have an announcement on Consent Item 14. The recommendation on the agenda states it's going to be adopted on December 11th, and we'd like to make a modification, and that will be adopted on December 18th.
Okay.
Other than that, no other comments.
With that objection, the consent calendar has been moved, and it has been seconded by somebody on the left side of the dais, Councilman Chenier. Are there two items of public testimony here?
I have two speakers, Faygo on Item 4 and McWorthy on Item 20. Mr. Clark?
So my comments are actually relating to both items concerning the city auditor's report. Traditionally, usually when we see the city auditor's report on the agenda, it's an informational item, not a consent item. And I'm wondering why it's on the consent calendar because usually this is something that the public wants to be able to hear rather than just have it motioned and passed without discussion. So I'm wondering if this is just the announcement that it's coming to be on the agenda, and if so, when it will be on the agenda as an informational item so we can hear the report back from the city auditor's office? Or is this just going to be one of those that it's on the consent calendar, this is when we get to see it, and we'll have to go find it online?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe it is on the discussion calendar, Items 23 and 24.
It is Item 23, Mr. Clark.
That's an extension for the six-month period. There's two items on...
Item 24 is also for discussion, Mr. Clark, and that's the whistleblower report.
The whistleblower report, yes. This is...
Maybe I can ask the city manager...
Items four and five are specifically the report from the city auditor's office.
Okay. Let's ask the auditor here, please, to distinguish for the public the difference between Items 4 and 5 and Items 23 and 24, please.
So our activity reports are very brief reports. It would be very quick to go through them. They typically just provide a status update on where we stand on the active audit reports that we're currently engaged in. And so we have actually had a practice of putting those specific items on consent since they're more informational than anything. But the ones that are more material reports, which are like our actual audit reports or the recommendation follow-up and the whistleblower hotline report, those have been placed on discussion. But if there is interest from the council for me to discuss either of the two activity reports that we have on there, I would be happy to talk about them. So we have four items in total for this evening from the auditor's office.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Do you want to finish, Mr. Clark?
And basically, my only concern about it is about transparency. Even in the smaller reports, I feel it's important that the public have access to hear what those reports look like. Not all of us have access to be able to easily look up reports online. Some of us have nothing but our phone and reading PDFs on your phone. I don't know if any of you have ever had to try to do that. It's not easy, especially when you have limited amount of battery, limited access, things like that. So it's just an issue of transparency and making sure that these are things that are easily available to the public that may or may not have unlimited access.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
McWorthy is our next speaker on Item 20.
How are you all doing today?
Good. We're doing good.
I had a long day. The main thing, what is a salary schedule? An unrepresented employee for SHRA. People come to me, and those people... Some of those people are working for slave labor. Some contractors are doing anything they want to do when they have a contract with SHRA. This is found through an investigation that I'm involved in. And we wonder, you know, should be a schedule posted somewhere so when a young person asks about a job with SHRA, you can explain to them what's the salary? These type of things should be talked about, people, or put somewhere that people can understand that some of those jobs, you just ain't making no money on. It just ain't worth your time if you got any type of degree. So, you know, these type of things should be brought forward and talked about because I observed maintenance across 37 and Second Avenue. The time they spent on sprinkler heads, I could have done a whole yard. Who supervised these people? You know, somebody, they're not contractors. They work on... They's on a payroll at SHRA. But we find out some of the contractors that clean some stuff or stow some stuff, it's sad. And we're going to be showing some video on that soon once this case gets moving forward that, you know... This is uncalled for. This type of thing now shouldn't have to go through that with as many people, as much money that you are taking from the low-income neighborhoods. And these people is working for slave labor. So the only thing I can say, you got to wake up.
The consent calendar has now been moved and seconded. Public testimony has been taken. There's no council questions or comments. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. The consent calendar passes then on a unanimous vote of seven to nothing. All right. We now move to File Item 22. Who's presenting on File Item 22?
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name's Sean DeCoursey. I'm an Associate Preservation Planner with the Community Development Department, and I'm here today to present... If I could get the projector, please. Thank you. I'm here today to present landmark nominations for 2640 and 2672 Montgomery Way in the Curtis Park neighborhood. These nominations were initiated by the owners of these two properties, and I'd like to add that they have also begun the process for nominating these individual buildings as landmarks on the National Register of Historic Places. They're working with a student from Sacramento State to nominate these properties. Staff has received one letter of support for these nominations from Preservation Sacramento. The two properties are associated with the National Better Homes Movement of the 1920s, a campaign of homeownership, modernization, and beautification that grew from a critical shortage of homes in the years following World War I. The nominated properties are constructed in the English Tudor Revival style, which was very popular in Sacramento from the 1920s through the 1940s. These buildings represent two of the three model homes designed by the important architecture firm Dean &amp; Dean. These architects were prolific residential designers who influenced residential and public building designs throughout Sacramento. They designed several imposing residences in South Curtis Oaks and East Sacramento. Their residential designs, in addition to appearing in feature articles in The Architect and Engineer in 1922 and 1927, were also featured in pattern books published by House and Garden Magazine. The Preservation Commission unanimously recommended the city council pass an ordinance listing these two properties on the Sacramento Register. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions. The homeowners are also here in the audience but do not have a formal statement to make.
Do we have public testimony on this item?
I do not have an evidence.
We do not? Then we have members. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. These are beautiful homes, and I want to just draw a distinction because sometimes we're talking about things going on in the historical register that are not, but are just old. These are old and beautiful, and I know the owners have done great work both to keep them up and to move them into the position that they are tonight where we can vote on whether to pass this staff recommendation. Montgomery is a great street. It's in a beautiful neighborhood, so all of those pieces are important. With that, I want to close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation. With that, I want to close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Again, no further public testimony or council comment. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Next, we move to the auditor items. Let's move to Items 23 and 24. You can present together, Mr. Seguerra. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. Jorge Seguerra, your City Auditor. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion approving the recommendation follow-up report and the whistleblower hotline activity report. The recommendation follow-up report details the implementation status of all outstanding audit recommendations. For example, our status report on the audit of the city's medical marijuana dispensaries details that, since our last audit report, the city has made great progress in addressing the auditor's recommendations. They have implemented four recommendations and have reached the status of partly implemented on 14 recommendations. Also of note is that the Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement implemented a review process of the dispensary's financial documents to identify instances of underreporting of gross receipts. We are pleased to report that staff finalized a review of the 2016 renewal applications and collected $33,150 in additional business operation tax. The whistleblower hotline report shows that, since inception, the Office of the City Auditor has received almost 1,000 tips. Investigating these tips have provided the city with an opportunity to take corrective action and deter inappropriate employee activity. For this reporting period, we received 85 new tips and substantiated six tips related to potential fraud, nepotism, compliance with city codes, and inappropriate use of city resources. We have referred all substantiated cases to the appropriate city departments for review and potential corrective action. That's the end of my presentation for today, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there, is there public testimony?
I have two speakers on this item. So for Item 23, McWorthy and then Faygo.
Now, we get again to move, so we can ask some legal questions on audit. Last time the audit was here is about Yarina, and who was employed and who got trained, which I said was ideology. But when we was talking about the policies of the marijuana, did you explain to those people this type of investigation will go on your tips when they put their money into marijuana? See, this is what I'm saying, people. You run things through here, and those people have never been in the business. They didn't know what to oppose and what to question. You set up something that you can watchdog and make money off when you get ready. And you talk about $33,000, and you own policies. Then we look at sale tax. Now, your measure you pass. Nobody said one word. When that sale tax leave the people and go to the state, that's money. How much interest does the state make on it before he send it back to the county and state? These are the type of audits will help people here. We need free enterprise in this town, not more government-owned monopoly on business. This is a monopoly. The marijuana is a monopoly on control of what people make. And you all sit right here, and Mayor Steinberg, you sit there and said, "People of color." That's slavery mentality. I asked you to talk to you privately, you didn't. That's what masters said to us when they got our 16-year-old daughter's pregnant, to move them in the house with them. A privilege. We pay tax here too. We paid tax here for years, but yet still going to say, "We give you an opportunity." Wake up, people. You got three black guys sitting here on your council and can't even open their mouth. "Aye," is all they can say. Never can approach nothing, and that's ridiculous, people. And you talking about this city growing? This city can't go nowhere like that.
Our next speaker is Faygo.
You know, I always want to thank the City Auditor. I look forward to hearing the auditor's reports. It's good to hear what's going on within the city and finding out that they're, where the corruption is lying. I do like it when there's a little bit more details, like where the nepotism is and where the overspending and potential fraud cases are. That's kind of important for transparency within our city, and that's why I really like the City Auditor's office, because they do help bring these things to light, so there can be transparency within our city hall and some form of accountability, which is why I'm kind of disturbed about the Measure K issue, or was it L or K? That's what got me confused on it when they misprinted it. But, you know, taking the independent budget analysis position and encompassing it into the City Auditor's Department, I feel is going to dilute the abilities of the City Auditor to actually bring forth the kind of accountability we hope for from our City Auditor's office. They've already expressed concerns in the past about not having enough staff to be able to properly vet and look into all the reports from the whistleblower hotline and other aspects of the auditor's office tasks. And I feel that adding to them the tasks of the independent budget analysis is going to further keep them from being able to do as good of a job as the auditor has been doing for the years that I've been coming to City Council. It's already a tough job. There's a lot of money being spent. There's a lot of different areas where there is corruption going on. And, you know, adding more tasks and more responsibilities to an office that's already said that they have trouble keeping up with everything in the past, I feel is just another way to escape the accountability that the public is actually looking for from our City Council. So I encourage you to, if you're going to, since it already passed, to do that, at least make sure that there's more staff to help them be able to get through these processes and find where these acts of corruption, fraud, nepotism, you know, help them be able to actually address it in a more productive fashion, rather than adding more tasks onto their already full plate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I have no more speakers.
Okay. The item has been moved and seconded. We do have a comment from Councilmember Carr. Has this, both items been moved, or just...
I have not heard either.
Both of them? Yes. Is there a motion on both items?
There's a motion on both items.
Okay. Seconded, Councilmember Carr.
Jorge, I'd like to ask you a question. You pay Faygo to say all of that? No, I was just joking. On the whistleblower, have you noticed any trends?
You know, we get a broad range of tips through the whistleblower hotline, and as of yet, we haven't looked for particular trends. I know that one of the things that has been coming to our attention recently has been issues regarding nepotism. That has been something that has come up, but I think it's also associated with the city having passed a policy regarding nepotism that they're trying to implement. So it makes sense that we would have that increased activity related to that and how that policy is being implemented. We've also received several tips regarding misuse of city assets. But again, as far as I know, in other jurisdictions that have a whistleblower hotline like ours, that is a common tip that is received regarding inappropriate employee activity.
And no whistleblower tips on fraternization?
We have received a couple on fraternization, yes, which we did substantiate.
And given to the city manager for corrective action?
Yes, and there was corrective action that was taken.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Jorge, thank you for all of your work and your staff's work. Since I came to the council, you've always had the utmost professionalism, and you've done things that are sometimes very challenging for your staff, and I think you've done it quite courageously, to be honest. I also remember when we chose to fund the whistleblower hotline, and that was a request from Eye on Sacramento, but it has yielded, I think, greater trust, knowing that there's a place for people to anonymously report tips, and clearly, by some of the tips you've pursued and investigated and substantiated, I think it is being effective. To the comment about combining the IBA with your office, I believe it gives you more resources and more staff to more adequately fulfill your responsibilities to the city. And with you, hopefully, as our charter officer, I believe that the public will have more trust in government. So thank you for all your hard work. We look forward to you continuing to boost savings and uncovering things that shouldn't be happening.
Thank you. And if I could add just one more thing, you know, it's one thing to receive tips about inappropriate activity within the city through the whistleblower hotline, but one of the things that I don't want to be missed is the value that the hotline provides in acting as a deterrent to other employees. As employees become more aware of the availability of this to anonymously report inappropriate employee activity, it makes employees question whether or not to engage in those things in the first place, which is of tremendous value to the city. And so, I will continue to operate the whistleblower hotline in a way that I think is effective and efficient and helps the city move forward.
Good. Good. Thank you very, very much. Two items have been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. They both pass.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the auditor, that is the formal agenda for this evening. We do have several information items that I suppose are going to be received. Are there public comments on items not on the agenda?
I have, did you want to, I have five speakers. Did you want to do council comments first, or...
No. Oh, well, let's do council comments for... Okay, let's get them. Okay, fine.
I have five speakers for matters not on the agenda. First is David Schwegel, McWorthy, and then Faygo.
Reading Sacramento City Council, David Schwegel, U.S. High-Speed Rail Association, three items. First off, transit-oriented development. Just wanted to reinforce the importance of moving forward full speed ahead with those transit-oriented development projects, be them in the rail yards or around the light rail stations. I see that transit-oriented development was a very hot topic during last Thursday's P&amp;D Committee, and I'm sure it's going to be a hot topic at the West Coast Rail Conference coming up in Los Angeles, April 30th through May 2nd, 2019. And we saw the selection of Arlington, Virginia, which apparently is a mega TOD complex. Really underscores the importance of investing heavily in TOD and stimulating the economy. Second, in light of the not-so-pretty High-Speed Rail Authority's audit report and the not-so-pretty legislative hearing that took place last week, I encourage us to really reinforce our talking points on getting our city connected to the high-speed rail network sooner rather than later. One of the major talking points is the importance of giving people expedited access to government from throughout the state. And the way that we know that we'd be successful is that we see the Capitol walls bursting at the seams, with so many folks coming up here on high-speed rail, becoming actively engaged in legislative affairs. Third, and finally, I encourage us to give Altamont Corridor Express ACE a warm welcome as they bring passenger rail service up here, hopefully as soon as 2020. Now, they're going to be putting their station in Midtown, which is quite a distance from Sacramento Valley Station, so I encourage us to explore interesting opportunities to connect those two. For example, you might want to use a monorail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is McWorthy, then Faygo, then Raj Singh.
At a water meeting, led water meeting last week, we heard, I heard that an engineer was saying that they was going to pump water into the ground. Mayor Steinberg, have you got any information on pumping water into the ground? Do you have any, a core of engineers, when you pump water into the ground? We understand water will run downhill, but we know what water will do up here. Now, when you pump water into the ground, what is the pounds of pressure and how deep that water go? Now, you are here in this state on a hot pan, and a hot pan is nothing but sand and clay that's 36 inches down. That's the reason your trees blow over, because they don't have a taproot. When you start pumping water into that, that stuff going to just corrode. So, you know, let's do something that's facts is on, instead of just words somebody's saying about water when you are not short of water. Let's don't take no risks and no sinkholes being developed here, because I don't want one on Second Avenue. I don't care where you pump water at, but don't pump it on Second Avenue.
Next speaker is Faygo. Calling Faygo is Raj Singh.
So, I do have to say, I'm glad to hear that there is some motion going forward on future shelters being built in every district. One thing I would like to see happen with some of these, especially if you're doing tiny home village-type scenarios, they could actually make it so where they could last longer and be more than just a place to put, house people temporarily. Put a business on the property that is run by the homeless themselves that are staying there, where it employs them. Give them a $15-an-hour wage, take $5 an hour from that, and put it into a fund so that when they are ready to transition into their own apartments or house, that money goes to help cover their first few months, so that the transition is easier. It also helps bring these, bring people up. Not everybody's going to want to work there, this, that, the other, but it gives people the job experience, gets them back into it, and acts as more than just a place to warehouse people until you have options. It also helps speed up the process for people, because now they're able to make their own money, rebuild their own self-esteem. And for the people that aren't in need of special services like mental health or drug rehabilitation, that all they need is that leg up, you're giving them the ability to get that leg up on their own by getting the employment, because I'll tell you right now, being homeless, trying to get a job while on the streets is next to impossible. Nobody wants to hire you, because they assume that you're lazy, or they assume that you have a disability of some form, or that you're on drugs. And there's a large percent of us that none of that applies to. Riddance is not as visible half the time, because, well, we don't make a lot of noise. We tend to try to stay out of people's way more. And, you know, something like that would be a great asset, and the revenue that the restaurant or whatever business you put in that location can go right back into helping keep the triage centers open, so you don't have to keep vying for more funding. Thank you very much.
Good idea. Thank you.
And if ever any of you want to talk to me about more of the ideas that I actually have, you already know how to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Raj Singh, Daniel Aderholt, and then Virginia Lopez is our final speaker.
Well, I met a few months ago to mayor, and I'm trying to contact District 2, trying to get hold of District 2 concept person. Okay. So, my whole agenda is that against the owners, owners are the lifeline of county's income. And what is happening right now is very horrible. The city, in District 2, $25,000 per day, there's a fine. It is, by the way, in the book, is against the violators. Well, somebody was growing marijuana, and we were blamed that we are keeping him there. And ultimately, this, they arrested him. Once they arrested, everything disappeared. So in other words, by profession, I'm engineer, so I was doing engineering, and there is one chapter, it's called Engineering Economics. Do I apply here? No, it doesn't work in city. They could have arrested the, from day one, we called the cops, and they didn't want to arrest him. If they were arresting for the first day, there was nothing going on. All the statutes is against the violators, not the owners. Owners should not be replaced by the violators. Now, more horrible things. I was in the news. There's a one house we had on Stockton Boulevard. Well, houses was boarded up, means that we were not keeping anybody. The county went there to have the receiver. Receiver was assigned, means that we cannot go to the house, and the receiver will control it. There were four structures, burned, Bun Y1, on different days.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you, sir. All right. I would like to see you whenever I can.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Aderholt, and then Virginia Lopez.
Good evening. Mayor, I owe you an apology, because I was a little skeptical. Like I told you, I didn't know you, but I know Jeff Harris, and I respect Jeff Harris very much. He's the only one who responded back before and supported us in the game, Clean American River. But you have shown me that you do care about the homeless. You did, you did keep the shelter open, which I was a little skeptical of happening, but I was praying you would, and you did, and I thank you for that. I thank you all for that. I know it's rough for you guys doing this. You guys got to find ways of paying everything. I know it's not an easy thing to do, but I think it's really cool that you guys are opening up our shelters. It's a start. Considering how many homeless people we have in our community, it's a really good start. good start. And I know now you're not just blowing smoke, Mayor, you're really mean what you're saying, and I owe you apology, and I want to say thank you.
No apology necessary, really, but thank you.
I just want to say thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Virginia Lopez.
Yeah, I'm here to find out, I know you passed, I think it was item one of last week of your meeting regarding the removal of trees, and I was trying to get more information about that removal of trees, if the city has to post notice for the public, or if there's any recourse of, you know, I don't know how old these trees are, I haven't had a chance to look at them, the area by Convention Center and the Community Center. And I understand that they want to upgrade all of that, but I don't know, I think about our air quality, and I'm thinking if they're mature trees, we should really consider, I don't know, some kind of design that includes them as opposed to just getting rid of them. So, I know there's ninety-six trees up for removal and eighty trees to replace them.
Ninety-six is not the accurate number.
No?
Ms. Lopez, this is in honor, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Oh, it's public comment on items not on the agenda.
I couldn't punch up, but I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards. We acted on this last week, and I'd be happy to fill you in on the details.
Yes, it was passed last week.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to stay and talk to you. We're just about to conclude the meeting, and if you're minutes, I'll stay and talk to you.
Alrighty. Thank you. I just didn't know.
Ms. Lopez, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have council ideas and questions, and then we will adjourn. Councilman Sheneer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two items tomorrow night. The Del Rio Trail Public Information Meeting will happen at Pony Express Elementary from six to eight P.M. And then the Oak Park Neighborhood Association is going to have its annual toy drive and holiday party, five-thirty to seven-thirty P.M. Thursday at Oak Park Community Campus. And I just, for all our Jewish friends, want to wish you a happy Hanukkah. Thank you. And tell you that the mayor's wife makes the best latkes in town. She does, thank you. Councilman Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four announcements I'd like to make. The Valley High Resource Center is going to have an international winter festival. It's going to take place on Thursday, December the sixth, from four to six P.M. at the St. Luke Lutheran Church, located at seventy-five ninety-five Serna Parkway. There'll be arts and crafts, live music, free food, and pictures with Santa. We ask you to bring a dish of your choice, and by doing so, you'll earn a raffle ticket to take chance in winning the raffle. So, if you bring a dish, you get chance to win the raffle, additional ticket to win the raffle. And then the second announcement is the South Sacramento Youth Advisory Council. That, too, will take place on Thursday, December the sixth, from three-thirty to five-thirty at the JFK Kennedy High School in Room B-15. Sacramento Youth Advisory Council is a youth-led commission, an advocacy group whose mission is to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life for the Sacramento youth by advising the city council and the public on issues related to youth policies, programs, and opportunities. So, this is a wonderful opportunity. If you know of a youth that would like to participate, please pass the information on to them. And then we have an exciting, hanging holiday light at the Pocket Canal Parkway that's going to take place this Saturday at nine A.M. This is the first time that we've done this, and we're going to be hanging holiday lights along the Pocket Canal Parkway. We're going to have nineteen thousand lights to brighten the winter and glisten our beautiful canal. And if you're interested in participating and helping us to hang the lights, please call the, my office at area code nine-one-six, eight-zero-eight-seven-zero-zero-seven. And then finally, now through December the fourteenth, Mills on Wheels by ACC is gathering new lap blankets, scarves, socks, gloves, and other new warm, fuzzy items for homebound seniors who might not otherwise receive a holiday gift. We need to let them know that they are cared for and that they are not forgotten, and we hope that you'll participate. Items can be dropped off, seventy-three seventy-five Park City Drive, between the hours of seven-thirty to four-thirty. And for more information, call ACC at area code nine-one-six-four-four-four-nine-five-three-three. And Mayor, I'll be back at the end to close our meeting out.
Of course. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three quick announcements. This Thursday, December sixth, is the next Behind the Badge meeting at South, at the Natomas High School in South Natomas. It's an opportunity for girls thirteen and up to meet with female police officers in their community to ask questions and become familiar with careers in law enforcement. Saturday, December eighth, is going to be an interesting day in South Natomas. From ten to two, there will be a robotics workshop at the Natomas Library on Truxell Road. And then Saturday, December eighth, in the evening, will be the annual Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony from five-thirty to seven P.M. at the South Natomas Community Center. It's really a great event. There'll be refreshments, entertainment, and of course, the tree lighting. It's about a thirty-foot-tall tree, and it's really quite an event for the Natomas area, so we hope to see you there.
Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three announcements and one adjourned in memory, and one follow-up for our city manager here. Number one, first announcement, again, save the date for next Thursday, December eighth, at five-thirty P.M. at the Coloma Community Center. We're going to have Snow Much Fun and the Annual District Six Tree Lighting. Mr. Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus are going to be there, and we're going to have a lot of crafts and family, family and friends out there, also Pan Dulce and some Mexican hot chocolate. So, join us on December eighth, five-thirty P.M. for Snow Much Fun. Also, the District Six, and I want to thank all our Public Works folks, and also Fran Halbacher and all the whole team over there, for the Twenty-Second Annual Holiday Celebration to help out our local elementary schools. Our city Public Works staff on December fourteenth from three to five P.M. are going to be at Mark Twain Elementary with students and family to do, it joins with food, fun, face painting, magic shows, games and crafts, and of course, Santa's going to be there. But I want to thank all the Public Works staff for making Christmas a little more special for folks in the Talik Village community. And last but not least, the Fruit Ridge Manor Neighborhood Association is meeting on December nineteenth at six-thirty P.M. at the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. And with that, Mr. City Manager, I wanted to follow up again with you on a request to meet with the Business Improvement Districts and folks on illegal dumping. I want to make sure that we addressed that. There's been a significant amount of illegal dumping between Lawrence and Young Street over on Stockton Boulevard. It's been pretty dramatic in the, in this last few weeks, and I want to make sure that we, we address this issue of funding for illegal dumping. And then last but not least, I do have an adjourned in memory, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll wait, I see we have a couple other folks, so I'll wait with Mr. Jennings to do the adjourned in memory.
Of course. Councilman Warren, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to say, you know, I had to come tonight if I could only get five or ten minutes with my colleagues and the city manager, and so, and the city attorney, so I'm happy to be here. But I also wanted to mention, I'm not sure if the adjournment in memory of, if it's our dear friend, and I'll defer that to Councilman Jennings, but thank you very much, I'm happy to be here.
Of course. We're happy to have you, too. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. We're having our second EV launch. We did the first one at Whispering Pines, we installed two electric vehicles and chargers. They're ride-share vehicles to give people an opportunity to go to the grocery store, go to the hospital, whatever they need. The second launch is going to be at Creekside Village Apartments Clubhouse. That's going to be at sixty-four sixty-five Creek Center Court. That's going to start at noon. We're going to have a big celebration out there with the second EV launch, and we hope to get EVs installed in nearly all of our low-income apartment complexes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I know we have some very important adjourned in memories here. Should I begin with Councilmember Jennings?
I think we're going to, we'll start here, because I think my other colleagues are going to speak on the other one as well. So, you know, I had a, have a sad and unfortunate adjourned in memory. We lost a couple weeks ago during the holidays, a good friend of mine and committed member of the Tahoe Park community, Monty Stowers. Monty leaves behind his wife Jenny and their two kids, Sam and Molly. For those of you who may have known Monty, he had a rich and long, deep history in Tahoe Park. Not only did he, was he a veteran and a member of Post sixty-seven over on Stockton Boulevard and served in the armed forces, but he also was a Johnson High graduate. And even further than that, he was a Tahoe school graduate, from the Tahoe Elementary School. He'd lived in the neighborhood there for his entire life, with the exception of when he was off, serving our country. He was a no-nonsense guy. If anybody knows Monty, and every developer who came into the neighborhood knew Monty because he was involved in all the land use decisions, he got straight to the point. He had read a lot of staff reports and could, you know, go toe-to-toe with any land use attorney that could come before him. But it wasn't his intent to just ruffle your feathers. I think he, for him, he really cared about the neighborhood, cared about the community. He always was a good counsel for me. He was a friend, a teacher, a coach, a mentor, tireless worker for the community. He served on the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association Board. And it's, to say he will be missed is cliche, but never more true than now. I'll, I will dearly miss the conversations with my friend, you know, when, when he was in good health, we would get together at Talik Lounge and later on at Talik Donuts for a couple cups of donuts to talk about city policy. And, and when he got, when his health declined a little bit, we had our weekly call every mo, once a week in the mornings about different issues confronting him. Always watched Channel fourteen and the Law and Legislation Committee, always corrected me as well, Mr. Chairman Sheneer, about that, and, and had thoughtful insights that I would have never appreciated for a person that I thought to be extremely conservative, you know, and always had an open perspective on issues. Monty Stowers, again, a veteran who served his country, who served his community, his neighborhood, my dear friend, you will be missed. Thank you for all you've done for us.
Thank you for bringing that forward, Councilman Geta. Our condolences to his family and the entire Tahoe Park community. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to adjourn in memory of a friend to many, and I would ask my colleagues to join in, if there's anything that they would like to say in addition to what I'm going to say about Aubrey Lee Stone. That was his official name. Most of us called him Aubrey, or if you were really good friends with him, you called him Stony. And probably that was the only name that you knew him from, is Stony. He passed away last week. He was the president and founder of the California Black Chamber of Commerce. He was a champion for black enterprise. He was a giant in the small business community and a pioneer and advocate for minority business enterprises. Assemblymember Cheryl Brown says he will always be our champion, and many other people have weighed in as well to speak to the impact that he made into this community. As far as from me, he was one of the coolest, smoothest, smartest guys that I've ever met in my life. He affectionately called me little brother, and I affectionately called him my mentor. I learned a lot from Stony over the years, especially on the golf courses, he took all my money. But he was a champion. For those who would like to go to his services, they'll take place Saturday, December the eighth, nine to eleven will be the viewing, eleven to one will be the funeral, and two to four will be the memorial services. Stony also, for those of us who like music, started a radio station here in Sacramento called KDEE that still goes on today, and it's ninety-seven point five on your FM dial. So, Stony will be missed by many of us, and he will be remembered for the impact that he made, not only in the city of Sacramento, but the entire state of California.
Alan, do you want to add anything? I'd like to add something, but you go ahead first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Aubrey Stone, or Stony, was a dear friend of mine, and we spent a lot of time together through the years, playing golf, as he loved to do, but also talking about economic development and opportunities for particularly a part of our society that hadn't seemed to have progressed as much as other parts, and that's, you know, the economic development in African-American dominant communities and with black people. And he was always talking about how to improve, and in fact, he was talking about relocating the state Black Chamber to Del Paso Boulevard. We had, we had gone on a tour. Recently, in fact, as recent as two years ago, he and I traveled to South Africa together and had a chance to go over for the Essence South Africa Festival and talk about, I served on, I sat on a couple of panels there, he did as well. We had some private meetings with some of the electives there, but we talked about ways to connect black businesses in South Africa with black businesses in the United States. And in fact, the state, the national Black Chamber of Commerce has now done that effectively, and including there's some relationships in Sacramento with businesses there. And that's directly attributable to Aubrey and his willingness to look outside of traditional, you know, norms for how we in fact have and have not been effective in connecting and pooling resources and doing things that could help uplift all of our community, including black people. And, and there was no ambiguity about that. He would let you know, he will be sorely missed. I know I will absolutely miss that laugh, and, and, you know, early on, he used to beat me in golf, but he got to the point he couldn't do it anymore. But we had a lot of fun just talking on the course and all of that, and so, he'll be with us in spirit, you know, it's something that all of us will have to do at some point, is transition from here. And what we have are the memories, you know, and I have a lot of fond memories, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well said, both of you. I'd just like to add, you know, Aubrey, I've known for, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Larry, go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to add other than what my colleagues have said. Aubrey was a bigger-than-life individual. He filled up the room with his booming voice. And the one or two times that I've been down, have been unsure while I've been on the council, he's the one I call. Because Aubrey would always give it to you straight, and he didn't play favorites, he would tell you like his best advice. And even though they gave me a hard time, every time I went on one of the radio shows on his station, Aubrey never did. Aubrey would always assure me that he saw the world exactly the way I was seeing it, and that we should continue pressing on the way we were pressing on. So, I miss Aubrey a lot. I miss that voice, I miss that personality, I miss having someone to call.
He was, he did have that booming voice and that fierce dedication to the cause of African-American empowerment and empowerment of all people and all businesses, small businesses. But in addition, man, he was a sweet, sweet man. He was kind. I mean, he just always had a way to make the harshness more gentle. I remember the last time I saw him was in early November, just a month, little over a month ago, when I was doing a radio interview at KDE, being interviewed by Daryl and Tina Roberts, and, and they were grilling me about Measure U and other things, and Aubrey came in in the middle of the interview, wrapped his arms around me, interrupted the interview and said, this was a day or two after the Pittsburgh tragedy, on the air said, "I want you to tell your community that we love them and we're with them." And that was the last word. and we're with them." And that was the last words, I think, I ever, I ever heard from him. And I just always remember him as a very sweet and gentle man. So, in their memories, in their memories, two great residents of our Sacramento community. Peace to all. We are adjourned.